Well, go ahead and get us started with the City Council Study Session for Tuesday, September 10th, 2019. First, we will have public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to address the council. Three-minute limit per person, or five minutes of representing the official position of a recognized community organization. If you would like to show a video or PowerPoint, it must be submitted or emailed by 5:00 PM at the end of business day to the City Clerk Melanie Anderson at manderson@smamish.us. Please be aware, council meetings are videotaped and available to the public. First, I have Kevin Jones.
Here we go. Kevin Jones?
Perfect.
Address 12131, 113th Avenue Northeast, Suite 203, Kirkland, 98034. On behalf of the applicants for the August 15th concurrency certificates associated with the first phase of STC development, I submitted a memo to you earlier today summarizing some of the key facts related to those certificates and answering some questions raised since they were issued. In my remarks tonight, I'd like to emphasize the five points I made in that memo. First, traffic concurrency review applications for STC Phase 1 were filed in late May of this year in accordance with the procedures set forth in the city code. Second, city staff properly issued certificates of traffic concurrency upon completion of concurrency testing. Third, an approximate 1% increase in AM peak hour traffic on northbound Sahali Way resulting from the STC Phase 1 development is a reasonable estimate and comparable to the 1% to 2% increase the first phase of STC development would add to Smamish's total population. Fourth, the recently adopted tip provides sufficient capacity for a 1% increase in AM peak hour traffic on northbound Sahali Way. And fifth, including the Sahali Way improvement projects for concurrency testing was not only necessary but required. Finally, I note that there's been some chatter about the average peak hour trip rates used to estimate trip generation for a portion of STC Phase 1, namely the multifamily housing. I'd like the council to know that the rates city staff appropriately used for concurrency review are from the latest edition of the ITE Trip Generation Manual, which was published in 2017. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council this evening?
Hello, my name's Mary Victor, and I live at 408-208th Avenue Northeast in Smamish. I'm going to talk a little bit about last week's meeting and what's upcoming for this next week. With the Stormwater Code amendments, I believe Mayor Malchow had asked about what does significant or significant impact mean. The King County Surface Water Design Manual that we adopted, the latest one from 2016, is over 1,100 pages. So I did searches through there, and significant impacts is either defined or only appears four times. And it does things like, it talks about it not just that it would significantly aggravate things, but it also defines it related to the concurrency of the frequency or severity of the runoff, or the flow duration, or the depth. So it does define it pretty well in the King County manual, so we'd use ours first, and then when there aren't things, it would go. So I thought that was a good thing to look up, so thank you for that. Also, on the severe erosion problem, I believe Deputy Mayor Moran had asked about that. The severe erosion problem is also defined, it talks about conveyance system nuisance problems, road flooding and building flooding, and severe building flooding for the mayor who is asking about the people whose crawl spaces are garages, that's actually listed as one of the examples. So it does look like it's in the King County Code and all those massive pages that we have if we refer to that. I had brought up that they, on the easements on one of the last pages of Tawny and Danica's updates, that it says that you just need to have easements from downstream people. And I said, "Well, but sometimes the topography will go up, but the pipe goes down, or sometimes if you're pumping uphill." So I'd use the word impacted properties. And Danica said rightfully that impacted was a little squishy word, and she didn't really want to use that. But Pam asked to look for more, so I think, and you need an easement for any off-site system elements, because it would be off-site. So if it's not on your property and you go off-site, up, down, sideways, or backwards, that it would do that. And that could be put with downstream as well, but that would be my suggestion. And I didn't have these researched until today, so I was not able to talk with Danica about them. But the one I did talk with her about, well, there was a, there's a 100-foot, it's called an upgradient 100-foot setback from septic, 100-foot radii. It's really only going to deal with the downslope, it's not going to deal with the upslope septics, because she doesn't want to do that in Stormwater Code. That should happen in clearing and grading or land disturbance, or the other things that David Pyle would be working on. So she was going to talk with him about that. And then the last thing I passed out, it's a repeat issue of one of the pages from last week, I labeled it D and E on the top. And just to remind you, that land disturbance currently, at 7,000 square feet, regardless of your parcel size, you have to have a drainage review. So for critical drainage areas, it's added that it's 2,000 square feet, because it should be less for those. And then I had wanted that it could be 2,000 square feet, or 20% of the lot size, whichever is less. And Danica did not want to add that for Beaver and Pine Lakes, or for landslide hazardous areas, but she is going to be adding that for Tamarack and for Inglewood, because it makes sense there to the small lot. So this is kind of your study sheet for that, it's a good, easy way to read about it. And Danica, you're supposed to be making those. I know she had training Monday and Tuesday, so she's done the red line. I'm not exactly sure what it'll be on Friday, but I wanted to give you an update, so thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Mary. Anyone else that would like to address the council? Okay, seeing none, we will move to our first topic, which is a discussion on the East King County Census Committee Representation. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Counsel, good evening. This first item should be fairly, fairly simple. I sent the council out an email earlier today, basically explaining what this is, and I'll just go ahead and read the purpose, and then, and then we'll go from there. So the purpose is to make sure key partners and city leaders have the information and resources they need to ensure successful community outreach for the 2020 census. Debbie Lacy from EPIC, which is the Eastside Refugee and Immigrant Coalition, will be coordinating the committee and needs one representative from each city. And obviously, when thinking of the best representative, please consider someone who has the influence and ability to engage city resources. So the thought came up, who would like to do it? We could have a counselor, we could have a staff member. So with that, with that, Mayor, I will turn it back over to you. All I need is a designee or a designated representative, and then we'll go ahead and coordinate with the representative, if it is a council member, and we can get started. The first meeting will be September 24th, and the email kind of points out some of the tasks and the time commitment to it, four meetings. This is just to help with the process of doing the 2020 census.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Actually, I'd like to throw my name in the hat for this one. There's not many committees I'd like to get on, but I do want to throw my name in the hat on this one.
Are there other council members that are interested in participating? Councilmember Stewart?
I'd kind of like to see staff do it, since I'd like to see it not be kind of a political thing, and I think, you know, it's, what, four 90-minute meetings, I think it is?
Yes.
So it does seem like a considerable amount of time, so I just think it should be something, so.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
This is four meetings that are going to go over a series of months. I wanted to be, I was looking for it to be a non-political thing, because it goes over a series of months, and that's why I was looking for it to be with council.
You're good.
I've got thoughts.
Oh, go ahead. Tom?
I think having a counselor, council member doing it would make sense, and I would prefer that. If somebody's willing to do it, if not, then I think staff would be more than sufficient. But if Deputy Mayor Moran is willing, I think that makes sense. And I thought, actually, confirmed the, the email I thought Ricky sent out was, there were four meetings, but only one was required to attend for the representative. Was that not correct?
Yeah, yes, Counselor, the meetings are scheduled as a kind of, like you, like you mentioned, informative, but yet there's one that stands out. I think the other ones can, can, you can attend the other meetings, but I think there was just the one. We're in agreement either way. If a council wants to do it, we as staff can support. Obviously, it has to, the council have to have the resources, so obviously, resources can be had through staff or through my office, and we'd be happy to, to help in any way we can to make this happen. We just need a representative there, so, thank you for comments.
Okay, fair enough. Well, and I'm actually thinking, I thought the email almost sounded like the four meetings were the same, but they wanted-
Yeah, you might be right.
-the representative to be at one of the four, so it's really, in my mind, when I read it, I thought it was only a 90-minute commitment from whoever volunteers.
Now, let me go ahead and read the time commitment. I have it here. So the time commitment is, the committee will have four 90-minute, four 90-minute meetings. The first one will take place on September 24th at Redmond City Hall. The next meetings will be in January, March, and June. Dates in Eastside Meeting, a location to be determined. There will be several census information sessions, trainings, and community meetings to choose from, one to two hours in length. We ask that you commit to attending one of those other, other meetings. I think that's, I think the four, from what it sounds like here, the four meetings are going to be the ones you attend. Then the other sessions and trainings, they want you to go to at least one of those. And then in between the four committee meetings, you may be asked to assist with small tasks or provide brief input via email.
All right, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm looking at that. You are correct, I apologize.
Okay.
That's fair. I appreciate the clarification.
No problem. Thank you.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Thank you. I'm happy to support Councilmember Moran to be the designee for the city. I would just ask that you include, as part of your councilman reports, any written documentation, and just, you know, a couple minutes as to how things went, and what you learned, and to treat it as a committee, if we still have that.
Don't say that word. Don't say it.
But just, you know, kind of give us feedback as you're going along, but I appreciate your leadership in the city up to this point, and I look forward to hearing how it goes.
Good. I would concur with Councilmember Ritchie as well, that it would be nice to have a touch point directly on the council, and she can just include that in her council reports, as Councilmember Ritchie said, I think that would be good.
So, Mayor, if I may, I will need a consensus of the council to, to go ahead and move that forward, if you don't mind.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. Do I have a consensus? Councilwoman Hornish, you're good with that?
I am.
Okay, thank you. So I have my consensus, so.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Our next item is a discussion on the GMPC Vision 2050 Comment Letter. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor Counsel, Mike is here to help. You've kind of been getting information from Mike on Census 2020, Census 2020. Vision 2050, I'm still on the census item.
Nope, off that.
Census, it's next year. See, I gotta let that go, Eric, you're right. So, Vision 2050. So Mike's here to help answer questions, so I'll turn it over to Mike for maybe some brief introduction, and then we'll get on into it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Counsel, and Mr. City Manager. Mike Suggs, Senior Management Analyst here at the city. So as Rick mentioned, the purpose of this agenda item is to discuss the city's feedback on the Growth Management Planning Council's draft Vision 2050 Comment Letter, a copy of which was sent to the council a couple weeks ago via email, and is also included in your pack of materials tonight. You'll note that the letter does not offer specific proposed changes to the language in Vision 2050. Instead, it highlights areas of emphasis for PSRC to consider as it begins to adopt and implement the plan. Because the GMPC does not meet again before the Vision Comment Period closes, they are soliciting feedback over email from their members, and also through the Public Issues Committee, and the PIC is meeting tomorrow night to discuss this. So tonight is an opportunity to discuss your thoughts and supply comments to staff and the mayor in preparation for tomorrow's PIC meeting. One thing I forgot to include in the Agenda Bill for tonight is, separately, you may recall that the PIC developed their own feedback on Vision 2050 in the form of a Statement of Guiding Principles, and the mayor previously forwarded this to all of the council for comment, and the deadline for comment on that was August 16th. So I just wanted to mention that the PIC tomorrow evening will also be approving a statement, approving that statement as well. So you have the PIC with, the PIC has their Statement of Guiding Principles, and the GMPC has their Comment Letter, and I think the focus of tonight is on the GMPC Comment Letter. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor if there's maybe some further clarification on that.
Yeah, I think, well, the agenda items relative to the GMPC letter, but I do need to take feedback, which does overlap, back to the Public Issues Committee for tomorrow evening, because I have to vote, and so I need a consensus position from the city of Smamish on how I should vote, so. I don't have any lights on, but I know we had several councilmembers that provided some comments in advance on Mike's draft. I did read them, and I think Councilmember Hornish summarized very well some of my same thoughts, but I did want to add some additional thoughts in. And this was on Item 1, which is to maintain the integrity of the UGA boundary, prioritize cities and centers for accommodating growth. He talks about a lack of discussion as to whether all cities and centers within the UGA should or must be the same density and homogeneous. And I think the conversations that I have had, I've recently had a conversation as recently as last Friday with Issaquah's mayor, and we share some concerns relative to how boundary cities are treated, and boundary cities being those at the very edge of the urban growth boundary. You know, we are, we shouldn't be looked at identically as, as other cities that are further into the core on that. So that was a consideration I had. And then one other item under Number 5, which is to address the financial constraints facing counties and municipalities, is that the Vision 2050 is really concentrating on those areas that are inside the urban growth area, yet we have some non-contiguous areas that impact jurisdictions like ours and, like Issaquah, and certainly affect us from a 202 perspective, where you have areas like Carnation and Duval, which are urban growth areas themselves, but they have to leave their urban growth area, get onto either state routes or unincorporated areas to traverse into the, you know, the city centers where the jobs land, and yet there is a lack of investment going on outside of the urban growth areas, and that is a concern for jurisdictions like ours, and certainly like Issaquah's, where they have cut through traffic coming up from Maple Valley. We have, you know, areas that are coming up 202. And so I think there's a consideration financially for how we look at the transportation funding that is transpiring outside of the urban growth area that still affects people inside the urban growth area, or those that are traveling from urban growth areas, and then have to go through unincorporated areas outside of it, if that makes sense. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I would just encourage council to actually read through the entire vision document, because it very much addresses the fact that all cities are not, in fact, created equal. And if you look at the city of Smamish, while we are inside the urban growth boundary, we are in the lowest categorization in terms of growth and density. And Mike, I think you might even be able to provide us with a reference to the table where it describes that. I'll also point out that the Guiding Principles document emphasizes the fact that it supports the fact that the Vision 2050 wants to concentrate 65% of the population growth and 75% of the job growth within, and let me get this language exactly correct, the growth centers, of which Smamish is not one, but let me make sure that, that in fact, it does say the growth center. Sorry, I'm scrolling rather quickly here. Sorry. So I just, sorry, I can't find, I had my note on that, but I just want to say that I think it already addresses that, because it does, in fact, emphasize putting the growth in the, the urban growth centers. Here we go. The degree, here we go. Attract 65% of the region's residential and 75% of the region's employment growth to high-capacity transit station areas. So that's going to be where the, where the light rail stops are going, and where they have already designated them. So for instance, Kirkland is applying to create growth centers around their two light rail stops, and that's where they will attract the residential as well as the jobs growth. So that's already taken into consideration, and Mike, I know we discussed that table, but there's a table that defines the cities and what kinds of cities they are, and what kind of density they'll have. So I think that, you know, from a Smamish perspective, we're already being categorized as the lowest growth in, in terms of where the growth will be allocated. We are already kind of at the bottom of that list. Yeah, the other thing that I wanted to make sure was that, in terms of the, setting the growth targets, right, it's already addressed that the, the counties, the cities and towns will be in a process to transparently set the targets, and in developing the guidance that PSRC will provide, local targets must be based on real-world circumstances, reflect the ability of jurisdictions to provide necessary services and infrastructure, and recognize that market forces often act independent of local policy. We already are part of that conversation where we have the GMPC, I'm a member of the GMPC, and we will already be part of those conversations in terms of how to allocate that growth. And historically, Smamish has been given very low numbers relative to the rest of the region, so I just want to make sure that people are aware that, that that's already accounted for and emphasized in this letter. Thanks.
Councilmember Valderrama.
And I think that the way that we've been zoned as councilmember, Stewart had mentioned, has already been taking some of that into account, recalling that even prior to the Growth Management Act, already King County was looking at, as an area of that growth, whether we like it or not. And in 1990, that wasn't put in place before we, the GMA came into place. The part that I was going to raise now was, you were mentioning Issaquah's concern. Unfortunately, Issaquah and Redmond have both been designated and fought for the designation of regional growth centers. So Redmond has two regional growths, on downtown Redmond and the Overlake area. The city had resisted, our city had resisted Issaquah becoming a regional growth center. In 2015, as you recalled, as you were on the council, and Hornish and I, at that point, Issaquah insisted on becoming a regional growth center to take it in the urban core of the central Issaquah Plan. Then you have the ST3 that's coming out to both sides. So unfortunately, to the north and to the south, we have regional growth centers, and Smamish acquiesced to Issaquah and even supported their request to become a regional growth center to the PSRC. So now, for Issaquah to say we're on the border seems a little ludicrous to me, given that they've asked for that designation, and they've, they've got us pinned from the south and from the north, and they've asked for that ST3 station, as does Redmond has two stations coming into their regional growth. I don't see how we're going to avoid being seen as part of the growth areas. I know they've given a special consideration and will, but since we've allowed that to take place and haven't worked sufficiently to look at what the long-term consequences are, I think that we're going to have to recognize that we have to ask for special considerations, but recognize that there's going to be a tremendous amount of growth, and Issaquah may be saying they're a border area now, but that's not the song they sang when they asked everybody to support them becoming a regional urban growth center, and this council, or the past council, supported it in the city to become one. So I think we have to look realistically where we are, and with those two straight stations of ST3 on the left and the right, how do we encourage our citizens and the transit-oriented development to take place, so that we leverage that? Because they're not going to take away those regional urban growth center designations that they fought for. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, number one, it's not about Issaquah, it's about us. And Issaquah's in a much different classification in Vision 2050. The first highest density area, taking on the most growth, approximately 36%, is metropolitan cities. Core cities, which has Issaquah and Redmond, takes on 29% of the population growth. High capacity, the third category, high-capacity transit communities, take on 21%. And where Smamish is, is a city and town for 6%. And so focusing on Smamish, I think the point of emphasis, and I've heard it many times, is each city does not have to be everything for everybody. We're a region, and that's what this vision speaks of, is regional cooperation to work housing balance, affordable housing. And so that does not mean Smamish has to do all of that, or how much of that, a very low amount of it probably, given our topography, our sensitive areas, and we're frankly, mostly a bedroom community. The other concern, though, is being on the border and being in that third classification is neglect. And I scrolled down to doing school assessments and the adequacy of our schools, and I don't want the planners to ignore a school assessment just because we're in the lower growth area, because it's likely, it's more forward-looking, if you think forward-looking. We've got to go backward-looking, because we're deficient in school, school size, or school capacity. And so we, I want the focus on not in the categories of growth, but do an assessment backwards-looking as well as forward-looking. So that's some major concerns that we need to emphasize. So we're not everything for everybody, and let's do not just a forward-looking growth assessment of schools, but a backwards look at it. And that's it.
So just to circle back on what I was originally saying, because I think I may not have conveyed my thoughts, because we went down what Issaquah is or isn't, but it's, it's those areas relative to transportation funding that are outside of the urban growth area, that are not going to get the focus of having the dollars from PSRC. And that is the concern, and it is a concern of ours, and it is a concern of Issaquah's, and regardless of what designation Issaquah fought for, you know, they are under a new mayor than they were at the time they adopted that, and, but their concerns are valid, I believe. And if 75% of the jobs are going to be in these growth areas, those growth targets that cities get are floors, not ceilings. And so some of these outerlying areas will grow, and they will have additional car trips coming on these roads that are outside the urban growth area, that are not the focus of transportation funding dollars. And that is, that's kind of what the message that I was attempting to convey. I have read the 2050 Plan, and there are a few gaps in it. You know, page three, or page six, keep the region moving. I don't think it recognizes that the majority of residents at the boundary cities like Smamish are going to get in their car and drive, because we don't have the option of transit as a real opportunity for people to get on the buses until we get some express bus service here. Page 24, reduce long car trips. What does this phrase look like if it's successful? How are we defining a long car trip? Is it by distance? Is it by time? So these are some of the examples that I extracted from the 2050 Plan, and was just trying to draw attention to as far as gaps when you're looking at cities like Smamish at the very edge. Councilmember Stewart?
Yeah, I guess, just in general, I would say, since you need to vote, that I think that the, the letter that's been provided and the guiding principles, I would support them. I think that if you read what I already quoted, that the growth, that 65% of the residential growth and 75% of the job growth will not go to the areas like Carnation, they will go to the growth centers inside the growth boundary. And, and while there may be additional car trips coming, those will actually be outside of our commute areas and coming in. So certainly, all of the transportation in my mind is a concern. We obviously need more money all across the region for transit and transportation. That's just a fact, we need it, but the 1.8 million people are coming, no matter what. And so the question here is, how do we manage, how do we best manage that growth regionally? So this isn't a question of whether or not we want 1.8 million people to be moving here. The, the reality is, they're coming, and the question is, how do we best manage it? I think, looking at Smamish as being in that range, and thank you, Councilmember Ross, of, you know, we're looking at taking 6% of the growth, I think that is that tapered approach, and I think that is what the intent was, was to, to make sure that it isn't, you know, a hard, a hard edge necessarily, and that it does taper down. I'm all for-
And we need that across the region as well as in Sammamish. So that would be fine if we want to emphasize that more. But in looking at the Vision 2050 document and the letter, I'm very supportive of it because I think that, looking at the fact that once again, the 1.8 million people are coming, that is not a decision for this council, that is not a decision for anyone, that's what is expected to happen because of the growth that we will have in terms of the job market. So given that it's coming, how do we best manage it regionally? And I think that this approach, while certainly not perfect, is a really great approach. In terms of the definitions of the car trips, those are actually defined in the Vision document. They talk about both length of time of the car trips as well as the distance. And so looking at it, as, they looked at it from a couple of different angles. One was looking at it from a transit perspective and focusing the growth in where the transit will be, and also from environmental impact. So that is why they looked at both length of time in the cars as well as distance. So thanks. I fully support the letter. Thank you.
Tiffany, Mayor Moran.
Can you put me in the queue, Kristin?
You bet.
I very much support the thought that, the thoughts that are coming from Mayor Donna at Issaquah. I remember, you know, I remember being young, long ago, but getting married and looking for a place to live, guess what? This wouldn't be the community you fell in. You went further out because that's what you could afford. That's what's happening now, which is causing a situation that I don't think this addresses very well, which is that that's going to continue to happen. I don't care where you put the jobs. People can't live, but they're going to have to live further out where the prices are better because that's the way it's always been. We did it, you did it, I mean, I think everybody's done it. So what's happening is, is that especially border cities such as us and Issaquah are taking a lot of that traffic, but it's not coming with funding. In sitting on the emergency stuff, I know that when they look at funding, even just for emergencies, it starts at the core and then slowly moves out. You know, we're at the very end. So I very much support Mayor Polly and your comments on that.
Councilmember, oh, sorry, Councilmember Hornish, since you haven't spoken yet.
Can you help me understand the process at the PIC as far as what you're being asked? Is it the support letter as is? Do we have input? And if so, how do people then say yea or nay? Or is it just an up or down vote for the letter as is?
So at the PIC, they'll ask for feedback relative to those guiding principles. And if they're coming from the floor, if there are alterations, the council, or excuse me, the Public Issues Committee will vote on those, just as we do here. So if we were to have a motion, you could make amendments, and that is fair play at PIC as well.
Okay, thanks.
Just like this, I'm trying to liken it to what we do. Go ahead, Councilmember Hornish.
So the comment about that it's already implicit or taken into account that we're on the fringe, sounds like it is somewhat true, but it is a little bit of an oxymoron with the growth center, that the urban growth center that somebody like Issaquah and Redmond wanted to be. So I hear everybody saying that. I guess in my mind, I'm kind of thinking there's a, in this 2050 vision, there's three areas, not two. Transit-oriented, non-transit-oriented, and then you have the edges. Because not everybody has the transit capability, and not everybody's on the edge. So I'm kind of making that delineation amongst the last two, where, you know, where does Issaquah fall in? It's a little bit different than us. I think they are transit-oriented. We don't have a transit-oriented development, yet they do, but they're on the edge too. So that's, I'm just trying to make that distinction in my mind. So I guess I'd probably not, I mean, I'd still raise that issue, but I'm not sure how you put that into the policy or make a significant, a clear proposal to the PIC tomorrow, unless we can figure that out. As to the funding on the fifth policy issue, I think that's a huge issue, that if the UGA is not being, if the UGA people are being impacted like we are, but yet we don't have the funding to deal with the non-UGA impacts, that's basically an unfunded mandate that I think needs to be addressed. So I would definitely bring that one up. The first one, I could probably live without trying to bring anything unless we can come to a consensus as to what the difference is or what we can actually propose. But I think on the fifth issue, we definitely need to raise some, propose something and see what everybody else feels. But overall, I think I'm generally supportive of the letter as is with that modification to number five.
Councilmember Ross.
I guess this is not really a modification, but kind of a, maybe opinion. We talk a lot about transit, and in our classification as a city and town taking on little growth, we have very little high-capacity transit capability. And so as the regional transportation system grows, not only will the population growth and job growth be in the three tiers above us, but so will transit. So it'll be hit and miss for Sammamish from a transit perspective because they have to make money, they have to have capacity, and we see a lot of empty buses. So this vision does not drive transit to Sammamish. And so we're, that's going to be a challenge as we consider the different options going forward for Sammamish. And so with that in mind, I would, the only alternative is to push us up a category and be a higher-growth city, and I don't think we have the capacity to do that. So it's really aligned our transit capabilities with these categories. I'm just trying to be clear, and I don't know if other council members agree with me on that.
I don't have any more lights on. Mike, I suspect you may not have very clear direction from us. I think what I'm hearing is that by and large, we like the letter itself. I did hear a call for something relative to the unfunded mandate element to be added into number five. Counsel, did I capture that correctly?
I think so.
Okay.
We can work on a suggestion for what we might want to include in this letter around that unfunded mandate and provide it to the council, I guess, over email, maybe for a consensus.
Sure.
Yeah, we should be able to do that as long as we're not making a decision or vote as a group, but individually as a consensus, I don't think that would be a problem. We've done that in the past, or in groups of two would be fine. Mayor, thank you. Thanks, Mike.
And then as far as the Public Issues Committee goes, I can then also bring up that unfunded mandate concern that our council has for infrastructure. So, good? Okay. Can I lob one last thing in there that is an action item for PIC?
Well, we're discussing, we're discussing, yes. I mean, you're going to be the representative for it, so I don't know that it's.
Yeah, so I sent the packet to everyone. The only additional action item that I wanted to let you all know about is related to the King County Council committees. And PIC is slated to take a position on that tomorrow evening. But what I was told today is that it's probably a non-issue, we wouldn't really need to take a position on it. Originally, there was some thought in King County Council Charter review that they're doing, that they were going to remove the committees. So GMPC, GMPV, all that stuff, gone. And, you know, SCA said, no, 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 we like those committees, we like to have a role there. And I think that message got through already, and it's been removed. But we are going to take a position on that tomorrow night anyway with a statement in support of maintaining those committees. So if everyone can just nod their heads that it's okay to vote in favor of that statement. Very good. That was the only other thing I needed relative to.
No, very good.
All right.
If I may, I just, you know, again, reading through the letter, there are already statements in the letter that talk about providing funding for the infrastructure and the infrastructure needs. So I think it's fine to raise it, but I don't think that, a couple of things, I don't think that anyone within the SCA, right, any of the members are opposed to that. I think they all recognize and are fighting to get additional funding. So, I mean, I think it's fine to emphasize it, I just don't think that that's in conflict with anything that's already in there. They talk about resources, they also talk about tools, and they do talk about, Deputy Mayor Moran, just so you know, they do talk a lot about affordable housing and in allocating that growth to make sure that there are appropriate allocations for all levels of affordable housing. So as we know, there are different definitions and different tiers of affordable housing. And so they are, they are asking that in those growth areas that we, and there's also special emphasis on equity, right? So there's a whole section on additional equity policy proposals to make sure that we don't negatively impact people and we don't displace people as the development occurs. So I think that emphasis is there, and I hope that we will continue to support that. Thank you.
Okay. So I think we're moving on to our last discussion item, which is an audit of the traffic concurrency models. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, counsel, okay. Let's do it. Let's do it good. Okay, let me get to it. Okay, so we were tasked with bringing language back to start a contract with a traffic engineering company to do an audit. And so what you have before you is a draft request for qualification. From what I gathered from the council, that the council is tasking me with setting this contract up, so we're not going with RFP. I do have authority to do that, I have no problem doing that. And we will go ahead and do that. So what I want you to pay particular attention to is preliminary scope of services, which is right up front there, and also the proposed timeline. So we're fast-tracking this pretty good, but I want you guys to be okay with the timeline. And I want you to be okay with what we're asking in the scope of services. This agenda item is not to get into a big debate about a lot of different things. This agenda item is brought to you guys so that you can put your thoughts and what you want to see in this scope so we can do a good audit. And that's what it's for. So if you want to put something in it, let's put something in it. We're here to do it. Once this gets a consensus and you're good with this, then basically I will start my process to contract with a company and get this thing done. So we did add in the last bullet point, you'll notice, we put this last one in when working with staff, verification of model inputs since 2016. There was a question, Mayor, about 2016, which we can discuss. Completed in pipeline development projects and review of pre-existing applications. We wanted to make sure we got that in for the audit. Cheryl's here. Where is she at? Oh, there she is. She came back from the APWA conference, that's why she's wearing a very lovely shade of green. So she's here.
And you still managed to miss her.
Yeah. I thought she was back there still. Yeah, yeah. Green neon, right? You'd think I would see where it is, but anyways. So she's here to answer questions. But this is your opportunity to help us with this and give us your input. We'll make changes, and then we'll roll with it. So with that, Mayor, I turn it back over to you.
Great. I'll open it up for questions.
Put me in the queue.
Councilmember Hornish.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the preliminary scope is generally pretty good. One thing I'm trying to think about how to add is, you have accuracy of model compared to industry standards. I'm also trying to think of how the current model and assumptions compare to prior model and assumptions. If we can maybe add something along those lines as to recent changes. I guess with the expertise that we're getting, I'm also trying to think of why, you know, this is a question that's been burning us in our minds for quite some time, is here we are in 2019, and we're using three-year-old data, why can't we do something better than that in our concurrency? I don't know if that's really an audit, but maybe somebody has a good opinion as a consultant that could add to whether or not we could and should be using more up-to-date, real-time information versus three-year-old data. Then finally, I guess it's not really in the scope, but I'm also trying to figure out the oversight of the audit as to being, reporting to council directly. And I guess I probably need some legal advice, and we can't do that tonight, as to how can we do that, and how can we do that if we can, as to continuous input. And I know you call this a preliminary scope, because I think some of these things may morph depending on, as the consulting gets into it and starts asking questions, they may come back and say, well, I hadn't really thought about this before, should I go here or not? And I think that should be council's decision to understand where they're at, what's happening, and to answer their questions as to where to go next.
Counsel, I don't think we have a problem with that at all. Just, it needs to be up to the consensus of the whole council, how do they want to look at that and see that? We could do a brief update, and we can talk with council, our council, and basically say, can we put questions out depending on, you know, can we do two or threes, rather than taking in the meeting? Because if we go to a meeting, we have to wait, or wait for a week or two, or do a special meeting, we'd have a special meeting depending on the questions every other day. So what we could do, and so what your recommendations are, we're going to write all those down, we have the tapes, we'll make sure we get it into the scope and figure out what, and we can always call if we have a question on wording for a particular item. And then we can always talk with our council to word the item as well, and then we can get that out. But we can, we can try to do that so that you guys know what's going on at all times, how it's done. If the traffic engineering company or engineering company has some questions, we'll just, we'll just put it out there. I mean, like I said, this is, this is something we're fast-tracking, so there probably going to be some things maybe we're missing or that we have to do. But we want to get this thing started ASAP like we talked about. So all good thoughts.
Fair enough. And let me just kind of finish up then. And one idea that just hit me is, I know we did away with all our standing committees in the past, that we had previously, but that doesn't preclude us from forming a committee if we want to do so to go forward. Excuse me, I have the floor.
Yes.
It doesn't preclude us from a council and a body to form a committee if there's something that we want to then do as a council to speed things up in particular, and this might be an option that we consider. I know we can't do that tonight, and I know it's something that if we want to even go down that route, but I'm throwing it out as a possibility, that we can still have committees, even though we've done away with all the standing committees, but our council procedures still do allow that. Okay, I'm finished.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Stewart.
So I know you said that you, in the packet, that you anticipated that this, the cost of this will fall within your signing authority. Do you have any estimates, though, on how much you anticipate this will cost?
That is an extremely loaded question.
Okay. I didn't mean for it to be. I meant for it to actually be quite straightforward.
Cheryl and I have talked a little bit about the initial cost, depending on this scope that we put in here. The more we add, the more time it takes, the more the cost goes up, right?
So can we get just an order of magnitude to share with the public on what we think that the cost for this audit firm will be initially?
If I throw a number out there and I'm wrong, I'm going to be hammered if I throw it too high or too low, but I'll go through, throw one out. I mean, I'll just throw it out. So maybe 20 grand, 25 grand?
And how much do we think it's going to cost in terms of the consultant time? Like, I'm assuming that they're going to need time from DEA and our other consultants, so we have to add that into that as well, right?
Yeah, I mean, Cheryl, can you add to that? Is my cost analysis okay?
You guys don't really know. Okay.
I'm going out by saying it's going to cost this much. We don't know.
And then what will we be delaying in terms of what work will staff not get done while they're working on this?
I think the consultant's doing the most of the work, so, I mean, we'll provide them with information. They're going to be calling, you know, calling people.
I guess what I would like to ask for is for you to report back to us that throughout this process, what other deliverables that we've already asked staff to work on will get delayed because they have to work on this. So I know we had a special meeting, there were deliverables that staff had to work on to prepare for that, and then out of that, just to get to this meeting. of that, just to get to this meeting and going forward. And my concern is that we are taking time away from the other work that we need, like the transportation master plan and things. So I would just like to understand where this is taking away from other work, just so that we're aware of what's happening.
Yeah, I mean, we can track that.
I would love to have that. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Valderrama.
One point just to begin with, I would prefer that all -- One point to begin with is I would prefer that all of the discussions be in open public session instead of twos and threes. I mean, we did away with the whole issue of the task forces and committees and so -- and even though 99% of our citizens don't know or care about this model, there are some that have been charged up about it, and so it would be better to have it in public. Additionally, I think for the staff's sake, it would be good, because there have been misrepresentations and allegations that have not been founded. And I'd like to be able to make sure that the public can see how those are being answered back and forth so that they have a full transparency as to the process. With that in mind, a couple of things as I look at the scope of work, and I'll just start randomly at the last point, the verification of model 2016. That's fine. And then you go review of pre-existing applications. I assume that's 2016, up to 2016. Is that correct? Seeing Cheryl nod her head. And then what are we reviewing? Are we reviewing for the consistency with the above items? How it was applied or what?
I think, yeah, part of it is to make sure that what we approved for the concurrency certificates are actually part of the model itself.
Okay. All right. Just to make sure that we're clear on what the review will and the timeframe that it's going to be looking at. There was some conversations before during that meeting, and I think it was Deputy Mayor Moran who raised that she wanted somebody to come in independent of the process that had been raised. So in this RFQ, you're basically going to exclude the most knowledgeable ones on that doing, you know, the Fair Peers, the Victors, and all of them, because they've been involved with this, so you would want somebody on the outside. And so that would be taken into account as well to make sure that we're having a fresh set of eyes as we're looking at it. While I wasn't here for the vote on this, I would have asked that the word audit be changed to review, because I think instead of just being an audit, I think it'd be more beneficial to the city to be able to review our practices and lessons learned going forward instead of just looking backward alone with the prism of, as we say, of an audit, to be looking at, hey, what have we done? What have we learned? How was it applied? How do we apply it going forward and try to make this something more beneficial than just the backward? Because that feeds into these charge-type of positions than to say, these are things that we can do. I would also like to see, and it was interesting, as we were on the first part of the call that I was on, we had, what is it? What was his name? Josh that was on the call? And he had talked about some of the comparisons of our model with other cities as far as the calibration and how correct and accurate our model was. Part of this review, I think it would be good again to remind the citizens and our council of that comparison of how we stand, both for the updates, for the accuracy of the model, and those calibrations and the frequency of it just doing. And I heard him say it pretty concisely, and if we can get those kind of informations to come back, that would help us sarge a lot of concerns that sometimes, again, are subject to misrepresentations in the public eye. And so I think those would all be beneficial to have included as well. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Well, I agree with some of what Councilmember Valderrama said and some I disagree. It's an audit because of the fact that we found questionable outcomes. And as you do in any audit going into a business or going into anything, when you go into audit, it's because you had a questionable outcome. And in the end, after that comes the review process where you say, oh, we found this, and then we need to figure out how to fix it. So those are two completely different processes in my mind. Also, the twos and threes, I would prefer we didn't do twos and threes. That was my big problem with having a meeting in August, was that if we have something to say, I think it should be said in front of the public. So, and then I'm still surprised to hear that we are now going to keep a list of delays. So anytime in the future, let's make note that as we have somebody that we're going to go off and we're going to do something different, whether it be this, or we look at transit, or we decide to go talk to transit, when they tell us the same thing every time, let's make sure we keep track of how much time we spend on that, because that seems to me like a very interesting request.
Maybe adding to Councilmember Hornish's comments, specifically, I'd like to address the validity of trip generation assumptions.
Do you want that as a bullet, kind of a bullet point, Counselor?
Yes, please.
So speak. Cheryl's writing it down.
Validity of trip generation assumptions.
Okay.
For Samamish. And I also would like to have them recommend subjective analysis procedures, and how many or did we follow the majority of the subjective analysis to review the results? Was that performed? And I do, one thing that's the most difficult part of this code audit is independence, because it's not working with staff, but it's receiving information from staff. So we need a focal who's clearly not working in what they're thinking, what they're doing, where they're going with it. They need to be able to say, oh, we need this information. They have the professional judgment of what they need, so they can ask for information. But we need to have a process that preserves that independence so that we're not trying to justify the results. We're trying to independently review the results. And if we find out everything worked out fine, that would be satisfying as well as if there's a problem, that would also be something that would be informative. So preserving the independence is a key point.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Your light's on.
I'm nodding. And we have it on record, so we're going to go right back through, and we'll get everything put in.
All right. You pushed your button. That's why I asked.
Oh, that was on for one.
Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
You just had to wait a long time before it was your turn.
Forgot my button was off.
Councilmember Ritchie.
Can I add one more thing to Christie when I can?
Councilmember Hornish, give it just a moment. Councilmember Ritchie's got the floor.
Thank you. So Councilmember Valderrama spoke to a little bit of what I was going to say, but more to what he was saying or more taking a rip off that, I think it's important that this is done in the open. I think that it's important to learn from previous situations that any reporting of this is done to the full council, not individuals, when it is complete. If questions are needed, I would rather it took a little longer, but done in public or done in full session rather than twos and threes in committees and one-offs or individuals. I think that I'd rather you, if, when we do get feedback, and I'm sure there'll be additional questions, that you speak to all of us at the same time, whether in executive session, but I don't think that's necessary, or the full council in an open council meeting, or a special meeting or a study session, you know, whatever that takes. I just, I want to emphasize that the importance of it to me, and I oppose this whole thing. Let me just say that out loud. But having said that, if we're going to do it, and that's the will of the majority, then I would ask that it's done with the full council if at all possible. Secondarily, I see that the anticipated start date is October, anticipated project start is October 5th. If there's any way to expedite this, to ask for, I mean, I guess I kind of want to get it done, you know, rather than have it drag on if at all possible. And I know that people don't want to drag their feet, but sometimes the more questions we ask, the more in-depth we go, the longer things can take, and this can turn into just a long, drawn-out process. So my ask is that we try and keep the scope relatively limited and get the information back as soon as possible. And then from there, if we need to have a phase two because we didn't get the questions answered, let's go with that. Let's see what questions we can get answered initially, get, you know, relatively quick response so that we can be, you know, answerable to constituents and to our taxpayers, so we can, you know, get them information sooner rather than later. I could just see this back and forth going on for months and months and months, because that's what we tend to do on things like this. And I'd rather not, that we didn't do that. So that's all. Thank you.
Okay. I think Councilmember Ross couldn't have said my thoughts any better than he did, so I will concur with what he has already stated. And I think you've heard from more than enough of us to know that nobody wants to run back in a closed door in twos and threes. We want it out here. Okay.
Well, the only reason why I said twos and threes, because if there's questions and moving it forward, we're going to have to call a meeting every single time to do it. I have no problem doing that, okay? This was just all for time's sake. It's going to be transparent anyways, because once we ask a couple of questions, it's all going to be in the audit report or the review report, however the council states it, and it'll be in front of everybody, all on record. So it's still going to be transparent, but I'm good with it. We'll just move it forward. If we have to call a special meeting, we'll just call a special meeting for an update and get it done.
And Mr. City Manager, if you would just comment on the timeline, because I know that's something that you and I had talked about during the agenda meeting, and this was a pretty tight timeline as it was already, but if you want to speak to that, that might help frame it up for everyone.
Thank you. Well, we had the original timeline, pushed it out a little bit further, Counselor. I can appreciate the timeline. So basically, the way we did it for a couple of weeks was we have to get the consultant on board. So answer questions prior, because they're going to have questions on this scope, what about this, what about this, what about this, what about this? So after the question and answer, we still got to get contracts signed back and forth. So we figured that would be October, beginning of October would probably be a good time to start it, because there's going to be some transition in between there. If we can do it quicker, absolutely, we'll get it done quicker. If nobody has questions, yeah, we're ready to roll, and here's your cost. Boom, we'll go, and we'll start the contract sooner. But for us, this was a really good, I think, quick timeline, quicker than probably I've done a lot of things. But I want to get this done as well, and I want to make sure that we are getting deliverables and we're not stalling out for weeks at a time, but we're staying on top of the consultant. Questions and answers, let's get it done. Let's get the update done. Let's give an update to council, and I'd like to see this done sooner than later. But we feel that this proposed timeline, as it sits right now, will give us the time we need to get the contract in place. But if we can get it done sooner, I will get it done sooner.
So one last question, then. Thank you for answering that on the timeline. The date of 2016, and I realize that that is the traffic counts we're using, and maybe that was an easy plug-in as far as kind of a starting point, but I wondered if there was a way, and Cheryl, this may be a question for you, to look back to 2014?
How long would that take?
I'm sorry. So what's the question?
So we're looking at verification of model inputs since 2016. Can you explain to me why we're using 2016? I realize the traffic counts are from there, but aside from that...
That was the motion.
So I wasn't clear on the 2014. The 2016 is the most recent year that we calibrated the model. Excuse me if you'll remember all the discussions we've had. We were updating the model in 2015, 2016, and we had to put a stake in the ground and say, this is when we calibrated the model. And in between, excuse me, since 2016, we keep the model updated, which means that all the traffic concurrency certificates that we, so it is updated, but we always go back to 2016 because that is when we calibrated it. So if you want us to go to 2014, what's, sorry, what's the question?
So it's relative to this pre-existing application, and I think there are some back in 2014 that occurred that would be of interest for good comparables, and that's why I'm looking at 2014 specifically.
So that's a different model, though.
Understood. But I think I'm looking at it from a, what Councilmember Ross brought up, was the ITE trip generation. I understand it's a different ITE trip generation manual, too, but I guess I'm looking for a comparison and consistency of what we're using as far as inputs.
So are you wanting me to add into the scope of work all previous applications since 2014 and use that model at the time between the, for the 14 and 15 concurrency certificates? And then we'll use the current model to verify all the concurrency certificates since 2016?
So...
So we can do that. We can certainly.
Let me restate it, because I'm not trying to make this be some big to-do, but I think what I'm after specifically is understanding that we are consistent with the way that we use the ITE manuals, trip generation rates.
Right, right.
And while I understand that the ITE manuals are constantly updated, this is not relevant to the model itself as far as, you know, which model you're using. The ITE manual provides you trip generation rates based on dentist office, multifamily unit, whatever it is you're putting in there, there's a rate for that. And I want to make sure that we're being consistent, even though I understand the trip generation rates change as the manuals are updated. I'm looking for consistency. Is that something that we can look at? And is that too onerous? Because I'm not trying to go after the model itself back behind 2016, just...
You can state it just like you stated it, Mayor, right? And we can put it in as a bullet point just like that.
But is that too onerous?
You know, I don't know how many certificates were issued in 14, so I don't know. But we can get back to you. I can tell you, we can do some data mining and see how many applications we received.
Okay. That's fair. Councilmember Hornish.
Yes, thank you. And I think that's a good question. The only other thing to clarify, I think Councilmember Ross said something about the assumptions used in the trip generation, which is kind of what Mayor Malchow just referred to. But I also want to add then as a specific, if we're going to break down the bullets, the second bullet currently says trip generations and distributions. I took that as being the assumptions underlying those two things, but now we're breaking out the assumptions of trip generations. I would then add the assumptions of the distributions, including the assumptions for internal trips that are in the model. And validity to the standard and the vis a vis to the prior on both of those, I think, are kind of what you're hearing as to the assumptions. Are they consistent between the models that we're keeping using? And are they consistent as to the industry standards, which is kind of alluded to, but it's just a little bit more pinpointing of the scope, if you will. Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Tom, maybe you can help me with the wording on this, because it goes back to the accuracy of the model compared to industry standards. I'm concerned about just using industry standards because Samamish doesn't follow industry standards. You know, 84% of our people leave the city in the morning, and so I'm looking for something more, I'm looking for something with standards, you know, so it would read something similar to accuracy of model compared to, you know, standards set by the city, something like that, because I don't want to compare to something that we're not. Does that make sense?
Similar local jurisdictions.
Well, I think, can I speak?
Sure.
I think kind of what you're alluding to is that if in the past we have used something other than industry standards, then we're all kind of coalescing around, are we consistent in those assumptions? And I'm not sure the accuracy of model compared to industry standards or and prior assumptions, it's a little bit different than the accuracy. I'm struggling with it as well. I don't know if staff is getting an idea as to what we're looking for, but...
Hold on, Counselor.
So this bullet item was just to evaluate how accurate the model performs in predicting the future. So maybe what you're looking for is, you know, are there other standards that we've used in the process of maybe developing the model and what those standards are and how they've changed? For example, you know, our public work standards has changed. I think we revised them in 2016, I believe. I don't remember now. But there are significant changes because we updated the public work standards. So is it something along those lines?
Well, that's what I was wondering about, having it where it would be read the accuracy of the model compared to standards set by the city, meaning that would be incomparable, and then compared to what we have as standards versus who knows what.
Let me see if I can come up with something.
We'll come up with something. Mayor, if I may, real quick. We have a lot of additions to the scope. It's going to make it extremely difficult. Once we listen to the tape again, put everything on, are you guys going to... Once we listen to the tape again, put everything on, are you guys going to trust me to just contract? Or do you want to actually see this thing again before we go out? If you want to see this thing again in its form, we're going to have to have a special meeting, and I'm going to have to bring it to the council and say, here is everything, okay? And we're going to have to try not to add anything more once we bring it.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. So just throwing it out there to you. And the more they do, the longer it takes, which we don't have a problem with at all, okay? We want to make sure we get all your thoughts and processes on this scope. But there's a lot of stuff going out right now, and so we're going to have to, like I say, run back through the tape and make sure we capture everything and put it in a way that you're comfortable with. So we're going to have to have a short, I say short, meeting to look at it again, I think, once it's ready to roll. You guys tell me if you're okay with that.
My suggestion was going to actually address that, if I could, before we all answer that.
Sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. So to Deputy Mayor Moran's point, if this is an audit, then let's handle it like an audit. So if this were a financial audit, then the auditors would come in, they have a fairly standard scope of work, they would identify the things that they're going to go and test and validate, and then they would come back with an initial findings. And based on those initial findings, that would guide where they would necessarily need to go and do additional work. So I think in terms of making sure that we have the thoroughness as well as the speed, that we identify the top-level items that we want them to do the initial findings on, which can still be quite a thorough list, but they'll do that top-level analysis like you would in an audit. And then where they have any sort of questionable findings would guide where that next level would come down. And I think that's how we can make sure that everyone's questions get answered, but that we start to get some information back in a timely fashion. And also, Deputy Mayor Moran, I think what you're looking for is, I still think we need to understand the accuracy of our model as compared to industry standards, but I think what you're getting at is the calibration. So you want to know how accurate is our model in predicting what's going on on the ground in Sammamish. And I think it's fine for them to audit that. Josh already answered that, in that in doing our calibrations, it comes back at 99%. So I think having them validate if that calibration is accurate is what you're looking for, because that's going to tell us, is it accurate or not? And that's where they took a baseline, and they added stuff to it, and they predicted it would be X. And then when we went back and redid the counts, we found out that it was, you know, 99% of X, and so that's how they would come to that. So I think that's what you're getting at, and I think it's fair to ask to review the accuracy of our model compared to industry standards, as well as to validate the calibration. And if they validate that the calibration is correct, then that really kind of settles it, and it doesn't really matter what the industry standard is. So those would be my thoughts, but I think it's fine handling like an audit, because we can get that preliminary report very quickly. So maybe in that scope of work, we could ask for that initial set of findings, so we get some answers very quickly and know how much further we have to go. And by the way, just for the record, since I wasn't here for the vote either, I'm fine doing something really high-level, I suppose. I think that we are kind of going down a rat hole here, so that's why I'd like to see what those initial findings are before we spend a lot of time and a lot of money searching for something that probably isn't there. Thank you.
I'm going to change my, I'm going to change my guesstimate of the cost. I'm pulling that off the record, please. Thank you.
Councilmember Ross.
Well, actually, I don't find that funny. This is something that we are very serious about. Our citizens expect us to act responsibly and thoroughly. And I want to add and make sure it's not forgotten, I want the independence of mindset to be in writing in the scope of work. Don't leave that out, that's critical.
Independence of mindset?
There's an emphasis that restates essentially what I had said. You can watch the tape.
It'll be there.
And...
Is that like open-minded?
And so that, that's critical. And so we're going to have to do what we have to do. And as far as talking about the calibration or the accuracy in 99%, I'm an accountant in my, most of my career. Garbage in, garbage out, you can have accurate garbage. It's all about the assumptions. So that's where we really need to focus on, is the assumptions, is it valid in Sammamish? And that is the focus.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Valderrama.
First of all, going back to what Deputy Mayor Moran, so I think relates to what Ross says, is of the accuracy of the model compared to industry standards, and maybe we should be saying the city, but also comparison with the east side cities, because we have a mode of operating that are more similar, a number of our cities, some are different, obviously, onto it, but you can look at that basis. And that's where I think it behooves us to see how are we comparing with the others, because it doesn't matter what's being done in Michigan or in Illinois, it matters what's being done here, just like trying to bring somebody from the Growth Management Act from Florida where it doesn't exist. It's got to be somebody that's familiar with the area and the model. So I'd like to see, again, for that comparison and to go in. And I think it's a little charged to say garbage in and garbage out on the model, because they get, this model has been working and being utilized. I'd like to see and be transparent about what's been going into it, what's coming out, and how accurate it is, before prejudging it one way or the other. Additionally, on the 2014 request, I'm against that for two reasons. First of all, again, I was not here for that vote, because of the way it was scheduled, but I went back and listened to it, and specifically, when Councilmember Moran made her motion, she was asked, when would we go back to? And because of that calibration of the manual, we said 2016. So if we want to change it to 2014, I think that has to be made to an amendment to the motion in a separate meeting, because that was not what was voted on and considered, nor do I think, given the explanation that we can watch on tape, is it justified to go through? Because then you can start to also start saying, well, why not 2010? Why not 2008? And where does this end as it goes forward? So I think if we want to get something done for an audit, and we want to learn from it, let's go forward. And also, let's make sure that we're trying to keep it contained to what we've given the directions for. I think, you know, Councilmember Curly was great at criticizing, constantly revisiting things. He said, that's the sign of a dysfunctional council. And so let's stick with what we voted on. Also, let's bring it back up on the next meeting and put it up for another vote and go through another two-hour session on it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hornish.
I am somewhat in agreement with Councilmember Valderrama that just mentioned it. I don't remember the motion, if it was limited to 2016, but if it was, then he's right. We need to do that as a formal amendment to it, so I guess that probably can't be added, Mr. City Manager, if you go back and look at that, and we can add it or consider it next week if we need to. But what I'm going to kind of suggest, it kind of goes to what Pam was saying, I think there is some, and even what Jason said, we want to get going.
Yeah.
Well, I'm kind of thinking, I'm okay with you going with what you have right now, but put in the contract that it's subject to, the scope might change depending on council direction, subject to extra fees, obviously. But at least let's get going with what we have, and then it can be worked. And frankly, I like the idea of everything being in the open and discussed, so that the public can hear it, too.
Yeah.
So I think it's good that we just get going, and then we can kind of modify it and make sure that the consultant understands. It might be modified, depending on what we think and how we feel, depending on what they're finding, as we go down the path. But at least let's get going with what you have, is kind of my attitude. And I'm okay with you doing that.
Deputy Mayor Moran.
Okay.
I would agree with Councilmember Hornish. I think that, and one, I was not looking for the calibration. So if you have, if you're not understanding what I need, ask me for more information or something. But adding the calibration and adding, we're just adding more stuff and adding more stuff. When the motion was made, it was relatively short and sweet. So to add all this stuff right now was never my intent. So I do believe that, you know, the, just the wording of, it's the wording of the one that I gave you. Other than that, I think it looks pretty good to go out. I think we should have it in there, that that scope may change depending on findings.
We have to.
But I think that we need to get going on this, and I, so I really don't think there's a lot of changes that need to be made to it.
So I think I can survive with the language here, so long as the second bullet point, which says trip generation and distribution, is what we heard earlier, which is the assumption of distributions, including assumptions for those internal trips, is captured in there, right? I think that's what triggered this whole thing in the first place. Please don't lose that.
Yeah.
And I concur that if we add subject to, you know, additional council direction, then we can get moving on this, give ourselves the flexibility to pivot if we need to.
I mean, we have some very good, concise thoughts. Do you want us to add any of those? Councilmember Raj? Councilmember Hornish? Stuart?
Yes, absolutely.
So are we good with capturing the independence? Do you want that one in there, added to it? I mean, do we want anything else added to what we have here?
Isn't the nature of an audit, I mean, isn't the whole concept of an audit independence? I mean, it's fine to add it, I don't have a problem with it, but if we handle it as an audit, the whole idea is that it is, in fact, independent. So let's have them conduct it as such, and we're good.
I mean, but it doesn't, yeah.
It doesn't hurt to put the bullet point there.
Doesn't hurt to put it in.
Or a paragraph that is describing their role as independent, and they are to gather information.
A disclaimer, if you will, almost.
In our words, if they start, we're not trying to justify a result per se, we're trying to review and audit a result and make sure that we're doing the right practices.
Mayor Ritchie.
Thank you. Glad we're following lights. I think that it is important that all audits are independent. If this audit isn't independent in and of itself, I support Councilmember Ross's statement that we put that in there, if for no other reason than an outwardly facing document, a publicly facing document. Those that may not use the term audit in their work all the time need to understand that this is an independent review of our city policy and our structure, and specifically our concurrency process. In that regard, I hope that you have consensus to move forward on the five, six bullet points you have with the one or two independents, the trip generation issues that Councilmember Ross and Mayor Malchow added. And I would hope that we can move forward with this without further delay at a sketch level, and give you the authority to meet with proposed vendors, and then work with them to come up with more specific questions if needed, and then to report back to us if needed. And then we can move forward with all possible haste, recognizing that if additional questions come out of the initial report, we certainly have the right to do more questions and investigations and audits until we are blue in the face. So I hope that you have consensus to move forward. Thank you for your time, and the council, and the staff, and the work you have, and we'll put into this.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Are we all good? Are we all good with that? Consensus?
Yep.
Perfect.
We're good.